Hi, everyone, and welcome to the Hendrick Hudson Board of Education meeting. Today is Wednesday, March 19. We have previously previously opened the meeting off camera. So now we will, and we entered exec, we are returning to start the meeting. We will start with a pledge of allegiance. We're going to start tonight with the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as stated?
Motion to approve the agenda as stated.
Second, all in favor? We have anyone here to speak on our agenda items? No, thank you. Does anyone have anything they'd like to pull from the consent agenda tonight? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as stated.
All in favor? Okay, now we are moving on to the hearing of the public on agenda items.
There's no one signed up.
Thank you. And we move into our final budget review.
Thank you, President Mills. We've had a busy week here in terms of budget development. If you tuned into our Saturday data fun, we did our line by line. Tonight, we will provide the final review of superintendent's budget before we ask the board at our next public meeting to to adopt the budget and then we'll become the board's budget, which we will then promote throughout the community. Not promote, excuse me, we will share with the community the parameters of the budget. You go to the next slide. Just a reminder of our mission.
Well, it's Corey online.
Yes, I'm here.
A reminder in the next slide of our budget development process. So we're right at the cusp of the superintendent's budget, where we do a lot of the development, a lot of the changes, because it's also a time we're receiving a lot of changes to the variables that impact the budget. We will be asking the board to go down a budget adoption resolution that are able to second meeting. And until the community budget vote, it will be the Board of Education's proposed budget in our we've done our job if the board feels confident enough in adopting the overall spending amount that we are recommending to the community. So we're hopefully this evening going to put a closure to the development process unless what major variables such as state aid or anything else changes, which we will, of course, update you on. But that's what we're hoping to do tonight. Just a reminder on the next slide of our current budget parameters. And then on the next slide, we had we discussed staffing considerations as we went into the line by line. We shared with you some of our thinking there. We further refine that based upon some of the feedback we see in our our proposed budget again. This is subject to change. This is the transparency of the budget. This is not locked in. This is just how we have looked at our current staffing and possible changes to that to get within a budget that is balanced. And so you can see our approach there, the reductions. We relied heavily on attrition, which means that there was a position where somebody may be retiring or not coming back, and we are not filling that position. We will be looking to eliminate seven permanent substitute positions and not filling a number of requested positions that were brought to our attention by department heads or building principals or budget code owners for another term in the development process, and we see those positions there. As at some point in time in the budget, they may have been in our calculations to help us plan, but we have removed those positions from the budget to help us balance as well. We do have four contingent positions to support changes in student programmer needs. And we did have a central office clerical technology position, which is close to budget neutral, because Vinita through her work had just had looked at her budget and a zero based approach and said, I don't need this in my budget, I need this more. And she made the appropriate reduction to to be able to integrate that that staffing request. Again, these are subject to change. We have our tenure process, which is separate from the budget process and envoy staffing is always considered. And this is again that transparency behind our overall amount that we're going to ask you to adopt. We go to the next slide. We did have a request to put in actual counts by building based upon our best projections. Any questions on that?
This is, do these numbers include the full staff or just teachers?
Who's all staff?
All staff, okay.
Instruction staff, correct?
It's both.
Both.
It's both central office as well, so.
But as far as custodians, those aren't included in the count, are they?
The counts are included.
Thank you. And then the next slide, I'll turn over to Jill for our a review of the line by line and some of the component, the three component approach to the budget.
Right, so it this particular slide just shows an overall summary of the revenues and expenses by category. I just wanted to post it there so you could see a summary, but if you were to you click on the the words line by line in the in the top in the heading. Okay. You can give access.
Okay. I cannot.
Okay, so would I have to do that? I wouldn't give access to that document. So you have to open it back here?
Yeah.
Okay, bear with me a second. Yes. And just look right there. One. This?
We can blame the technical fact that it's a Mac.
Stop it. Okay. If you try now, I think you'll be able to access that. So I'm not going to go through the entire. In fact, this is the entire budget line by line. I can't click on it, Greg. Can you click on the hundred percent and make it fifty percent up at the top? Okay, so the if you go through the whole, if you just scroll down, I'm obviously not going to go through. This is everything line by line that we did on Saturday. It has three years of history. And then to the right, columns A, H, and A, I, they are the dollar differences and then the percent differences between this year and last year. So you can go through, anybody can go through that. It has access to the slides. So in the community, if they want to see the line by line budget, this is not out of the book we were looking at, which is exactly the same information. And it's by department. And then each of the gray lines going across would be the total for that department. So you can see how the changes are for each individual code group and department.
So Jill put this together as Jill put this together as part of the feedback on the forum of what we might like to see. So this is available to the public now, and this is how we will approach the public facing budget book as we go forward.
Yeah, I had intended to have this prepared for Saturday, but we just didn't get to finish it beforehand and but it contains all of the same information and has the same budget to budget increase of two point eight six percent and the tax levy change of four point five eight percent. And when you get down to all the way down to the bottom, so Greg, you can just kind of scroll all the way down fast, goes through each department, it goes through all of the grade levels, all of the subject lines for each building, and ends up with the benefits. And then again, at the bottom is that summary that I did post on that one slide. So for your viewing pleasure and comment as we between now and April 2nd, you can go through the entire budget line by line. And again, the bottom, this bottom is just a summary. Okay, go to the next slide.
This is great. I have the, I just want to, I mean, it's it's a lot of information, but I like the way that it summarizes everything we discussed.
Right, it is a summary of everything. It doesn't have actual its budget.
Budget.
For all three years. I can add on possibly for next year, maybe FTEs in there so that that information is on there as well. So we can, you know, grow it as I say. Sorry, there's a zero in the twenty five, twenty six year. So I just wanted to, I'm supposed to go over this as part of the state rules and regs for presenting your budget, and this is the three part budget. So we have an administrative portion of the budget is seven point four percent of the entire budget at seven million dollars, our capital portion of our budget at nine point four percent, nine million dollars. And of course, the majority of our budget is focused on program, and that's eighty point one million dollars. Again, this breaks down the revenues and expenses. You can see that the largest part of our revenues come from property taxes, and the second largest comes from state aid. In our expense category, the salaries and benefits are our largest portion of our budget. Out of the ninety six point two million dollars, we're looking at about seventy six million being salaries and benefits. And again, this is a review of our tax cap and how we got there. If anybody has any questions regarding that calculation, we've gone over it several times. Anybody in the community has questions, they're welcome to call and and ask those questions to verify and confirm any, any, any questions that they have. Basically, all I have unless anybody on the board has questions with regard to the budget hasn't changed since Saturday, other than the staffing, confirming the staffing considerations.
Questions for the board, for Jill, myself, or any of the captain, which related to the budget?
Just confirming. We're stating the obvious, but we're staying, we're not asking to hold our tax cap.
Correct.
We're using the amount that we had slated for the fund balance.
Correct.
And we're not diminishing any programs, but we're, we were looking at our staffing and making it more efficient, like a more.
Correct. And again, we don't, we don't have our state aid finalized figures yet from from them. We hope to see them prior to the adoption of the budget, which is always, we're not sure if we'll get them or not, and that would be the day before. If there were any major changes, we would have to make some decisions. Or again, we could, if it was additional state aid, let it fall to fund balance if it's coming in for next year, depending on the amount of money.
I do want to go to the stacking considerations. We did talk about this past Saturday. One of our options was to look at reduction of non mandated TAs across the district. We had chosen not to approach that at this point in time on March 19th, 2025 at twenty oh four. However, I do think it's a conversation that we need to have leadership governance also as an educational community. What is our belief and philosophy of the role of teaching assistants, aides within the instructional classroom balanced against our duties to be fiscal responsibility as well? So we want to start having those conversations, and that means that we were not doing it under the duress of a budget timeframe, but we're able to hear from all stakeholders on the benefits that they see or some of the things that they may ask us to consider. So we want to begin that conversation now for next year's budget development.
Jill, I just want to clarify really quickly. The four point six that show includes the eight hundred and seventy five thousand, that's the reserve, correct? Yes, okay.
Extra bonus points.
Well, you told me about the tax levy, the four point six. Oh, no, you're saying the four point six for fund balance, yes.
We had every second, which is the additional amount we've got for the fund balance.
Yep, has the additional seventy five.
Just a quick review of the propositions that our voters will see on the at the budget vote. We will, of course, have our proposed school budget for next year. We will have a board of trustee election, the establishment of a capital reserve. That is just the establishment. We are not seeking to put money into that reserve at this point in time. But if the voters approve it, that allows us to at a certain date in time, a later date in time to be able to do that. We are also on our ballots will be the Hendrick Hudson three library budget and then ballot measure to enable the district to purchase buses. Any questions?
Just one correction on that that slide, and I didn't catch earlier, so I might.
It's okay.
It says two and a half percent. It's two point eight six, actually. I think we were just sending rounding two and a half percent the other day.
Correction should be there. I really do want to extend my appreciation not only to individuals who helped us build this budget starting back in October. So our teachers, our teacher leaders, our department heads, but also to the Board of Education for help giving us clear parameters throughout the whole process, and that allows us to be even more transparent to the public as we continue to build that. So thank you very much.
That's it, no one has any other questions? We're gonna there's no other questions, we're gonna move on to our superintendent's update.
Thank you, President Mills. This evening, I would like to take a moment to recognize and express our deep gratitude to Mr. Anthony Giavonazzi, principal of the Blue Mountain Middle School. He has submitted his resignation for the purpose of retirement effective June 30th, 2025. Mr. Giavonazzi has been a valued member of the Hendrick Hudson, excuse me, Central School District since 2017, serving first as an assistant principal at the Hendrick Hudson High School before stepping into his current role as the principal of Blue Mountain Middle School. And throughout his tenure, he has demonstrated unwavering dedication to our students, staff, and our educational community. As we take time this spring to celebrate his legacy and his contributions, we also look forward and look ahead to ensuring a seamless leadership transitions. Dr. Stephen Garcia will lead the search process for the next principal of Blue Mountain Middle School to begin effect of July 1st, 2025. And on behalf of the entire Hendrick Hudson community, we thank Mr. Giavonazzi for his years of service and wish him all the best in his next chapter, the next chapter of his life. Today, myself and Director of Facilities Anthony Merleany met with representatives from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, the New York State Public Service Commission, and the Department of Health to discuss the baseline monitoring report for Buchananver Plank Elementary School. If you recall, earlier in the year, we, in December, we received that report, we released it to the community. It was shared with some of our partners in the Public Service Commission in D C to get an understanding of some baseline environmental data at the Buchananver Plank Elementary School. The recommendation of those entities are, as I heard numerous times, subject matter experts. Check if I have that title, subject matter expert. The recommendation was that that initial report served its purpose of identifying any major safety concerns, of which there were none found. And they do recommend prior to implementing the gamma ray detector, the gamma, not gamma ray, the gamma detection. It's not a justice, the gamma detection system acts Buchananver Plank that a more robust evaluation occurs. This will step, help establish an industry standard baseline for future assessments and really ensure that the monitoring system is accurate. So the Department of Environmental Conservation has provided us with a list of qualified vendors that we could work with to explore a recommended scope for the work for that expanded study. We will most likely complete a request for proposals for vendors to be selected and respond to. The estimated cost for that work is between seventy five hundred dollars and twelve thousand dollars for a full, a full proper industry standard support evaluation before we begin that monitoring. We remain committed to ensuring the health and safety for students, staff, and the community, and as always, will provide further updates as we move forward in this process. And finally, just a reminder that next Tuesday, March 25th, from six to seven P M at the Hendrick Hudson High School, we're still looking for a route. I know Carmen was looking into that today. We will have the first meeting of our centennial celebration task force. Again, Tuesday, March 25th, six P M to seven P M at the high school. And we're looking for any dedicated community member who wants to help us plan out this once in a lifetime event. Maybe once in a lifetime, okay. Expect that, but please email me at Michael Trombley at hendrickhudsonh schools.org or call my office at nine one four two five seven five one one two, extension five one one zero to sign up. And look forward to shaping the celebration. At this time, there are no questions requiring follow up. And due to the the close proximity of our most recent Board of Education meetings, only the superintendent will be providing a report to the Board of Education. That is all that matters.
All right, that brings us to Board comments, new business. On the board. We want to choose Corey, everything's pretty good. I'm gonna make sure. That moves us on to our policy readings. Probably seven tonight. Nope.
Algae sickness.
I have allergies. So this is the second reading of code two two four five, ex officio student member of the board. Board of Education.
We have a reading.
Second, all in favor? So one change we did make from last time, which Lauren, I believe you had asked about the required. If it had, or somebody asked, oh, that's definitely sorry, that it does have to be marked as required now. So we did make that change the last time we met and talked about this. And that was the only change we made in that time. This is a nifty thing. The where this breaks, I don't remember. You wear this braids from four to five.
Yeah, that's just the way board docs.
Yeah, you're gonna miss five.
I'll play around with it tomorrow.
Yeah, maybe if you just close up above additional provisions, so. No, because they shouldn't might come up. So I just want to say again, this is something that will be the process will be starting soon, I'm going to say, because it has to be done before the end of this school year, so that will be brought to the high school. They will start that process where they elect someone, and this will be starting for on the board for next school year. So the students will actually raise their hand that they're interested, and then they will campaign like they do for any other student government of the nation.
My school is already posturing to, and that process should have policy.
And I don't know if you guys have noticed that NISBA has been sending us and West Platte has been sending us information on this as well, on how to implement it. I did see too, there's that leadership thing in Albany again. And this was one of the topics that was on that as well. There's a motion to approve policy number twenty two forty five. All in favor? You just check a box up or hold? Okay, this is first reading policy four three two one dot one one, public report on revisions to district policies, practices, procedures upon finding of significant disproportionality. Board of Education.
Motion to approve the reading.
Second, all in favor? This is a required policy, first reading. We didn't have this. No, you got that right. This is a, this is special education. This is technically under the special education. Make sure that the classrooms are balanced. This is again required. These came to us from NISBA's. They noticed we didn't have any, should.
And just so you know, state does the monitoring of this based upon our frequent data submissions. They do take a look at our demographic data and placement in special education. Chris and I are notified when there is when they do release their monitoring reports, and they do tell us that there's, that there is a change starting that we need to address.
I just want to point out with this type of thing, because I think it's important to know. Just because we don't have a required policy in our policy book doesn't mean that we're not, that we're not, that the school district is not following the the laws behind the policies. It's just because we didn't do as much keeping up with our policy book for many years in the school district, we're going to catch up eventually. We're going to be complete, but it does, don't assume because we didn't have a policy that this hasn't been being done.
Yes, all administrators beyond their professional, their professionalism are required to uphold Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of State of the Art, and all educational laws and commissioner regulations as well as their policies.
We had talked about in policy, just to be a little transparent, what this looks like. So like, it is happening. We talked about how it was happening, the process that was going through, when they get notified and how they're looking at it. Okay, so we'll bring that one back. This is the first reading revision policy four five one one, textbook selection and adoption.
Motion to approve the reading.
Second, all in favor? This is a complete rewrite based on the recommendation of NISBA. Now, just for full clarification, I know we had a question on that. It does state in here that the board is the one who like agrees upon it. We are not selecting a book, just going through that. Obviously, we have to board through the selection that is presented to us. There will be a committee that is formed, they go through their process, they look to the superintendent, he brings it to us, we approve it. That's what this is stating. We are not under any circumstances doing the research ourselves that is coming to us from the committee.
Nothing gets pulled, well, this is.
This is not a poll kind of thing. This is if they decide that they want to get a new curriculum for the following year or what, I guess I don't really use the word pilot anymore, but if we want to get a curriculum, they go through that process. It's not about anything being pulled, it's about change and changing, and that's the district. Why not like in a school or anything else? If, Margaret, you can correct if anything I'm saying isn't correct. Okay.
Because textbooks are by March, you have to purchase them. It falls on your shared responsibility in the board, and we will present to you resolutions that indicate the title of the textbook, some reasons behind why it was selected, and also it'll it'll appear as a reservation on the agenda.
We'll bring this back. We rails, I understand, we also have committees in place now. So they, there's a math task force, and then we are also at the CIA Committee, which is your curriculum review committee. So there's processes in place to make sure that this is all reviewed by the right people before leaving that to to us. From that one back, this is first reading policy four five one three, library materials selection.
Motion to approve the reading.
Second, all in favor?
Again, this is not about pulling anything. It it's just how the, how the process goes through for books to be put into circulation within the water.
And this is, this is just the clarity, this is just library, not classroom.
Oh, is that what, why this is different than the other one we did? Is that, that was classroom and this is library?
I didn't notice this in the draft version, Carmen, but there's a bold here, such as the I don't know, books in library journal.
Looked at it too.
It wasn't like that, yeah.
I'll think it up.
I saw a typo when I did it somewhere.
And again, I know it states in there superintendent and the whole board, but there, there's committees that look at this before it even gets to us. So we are not, we are not doing again any of the selecting. We're just approving the selection, we're not approving the selection as an event.
Bring this one back. The next policy is the first reading, policy forty six hundred, counseling and guidance programs. This is another new policy that outlines exactly what our school counselors and guidance program, what their goals are, what their reason we have them. So again, this is not a required policy. We just feel like it's important to have this on record.
As my computer just said, yes. So the reason why it's noticed rather than a local or required policy is because the the way the schools districts must structure their counseling and guidance programs. the way that schools, districts must structure their counseling and guidance programs, uh, is laid out in commissioners' regulations, and there was a major update in twenty eighteen to that requiring, uh, different changes to the, the K three twelve counseling program, such as access to information K twelve about, uh, job, career opportunities, and to have our guidance advisor, uh, council.
And it's all spelled out. Is the guidance committee mentioned in here?
Yes.
It is, right?
So is the.
Yes, the advisory council.
Yes.
Which we have.
We do. Dr. Klein runs that, and it met once in a fall, and it should be another time before the school, uh, lets out.
We'll bring that back. The next one's the first reading, revision policy forty seven ten, grading systems. Grading is considered a positive.
More than a reading.
Second, on favor. I have a question about that one.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I don't know, it really. How do we ensure that all teachers that are teaching the same course grade the same? So one teacher is easier than the other.
So there's always going to be some level of subjectivity with a certain assignments.
But it was the same course.
Sure. So we did include language. If you look at the second paragraph, the red on the first page, um, the language that the policy committee attempted, uh, to, to codify there was to address just that. Class sections will employ uniform grading standards. Each course and section syllabus will clearly detail the grading standards, and students will, uh, be evaluated then.
So this was a lengthy conversation that we had just, well, transparency when we were looking at this, because we were asking that, like, how will we well, not me as a board, because it's not our position to, um, to do that, but how that would happen, and one, you know, we said that would be the team that they were going to get together, and then they were going to make those course books and everything to make sure it is more uniform in terms of percentages that are used, assignments that are, like, you don't want to have one teacher that has, let's say, twenty assignments, and their cohort partner has three.
Or one teacher that counts homework, and the other teacher doesn't count homework.
So that would be something that, um, again, will be looked at by the appropriate, I think, but those principals and the coordinators, all of that. So that would come from there. This is just now stating that we're going to do that, because we did not have, we had one. And it was, I know, this is a new policy. Oh, no, this is an updated twenty sixteen. Yeah.
So the, I do know that the high school has begun just that conversation of, of how we can ensure parity across the sections of the same course.
And who's responsible? The principals.
Would be the first.
Okay. Did, uh, do our I O's instructional leaders in participate in those?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, we're, now, now is this first reading revision policy forty seven seventy, graduation requirements. Early graduation.
Motion away from the reading.
Setting, on favor. This, this outlines the, uh, just, I think this is just early graduation. Is this? Yes. I thought.
It's a name change too.
Yes, well, it's a name change, something that's different about this one.
The titles.
Uh, I think part of it is the fact that graduation requirements will be changing, and this is just saying that we're going to be.
Flexibility to do that.
Yeah, that we're just going to be following whatever is presented to us that we have to follow from the state instead of anything we had before.
Many, many Board of Education policies for graduation requirements list out specific courses, specific credits.
And this one, before I said, like, the regions, but again, that will become one qual, like, one pathway, yeah, as opposed to the only pathway. So this just needs to open that when they decide those pathways, that we don't have to necessarily rewrite our policy. But this is a name change. It's a complete rewrite, because originally, policy forty seven seventy only referred to early graduation, hadn't, hadn't graduated early, or it was a, no, it was this paragraph is talking about what you can do, and then it mentions early graduation, I think, the eight semesters. I don't know, but it's in there, but we totally, it's a little different. And it also goes back to policy forty seven seventy two, which is diploma graduation. Potential options for student stability. That's it. That brings us to, um, committee reports. I just wanted to, I just wanted to mention the, um, Blue Mountain Middle School production this weekend. Um, the whole community should come out, it's free for the whole community to come. There is no charge to to come and see it. It is thirteen junior, um.
Friday.
It's Friday at seven, and then our Saturday at two P M. So you know, come, come and celebrate. We had held out this past weekend with our preschool students, and then this opportunity for our community to, with the middle school students, so.
Yep.
I just wanted to show that. Um, I don't get them, I, I, there hasn't been anything else. Okay.
Oh, and you guys, there's a dance on Friday, right?
Yes, the, um, F B B, first and second grade F B B.
No, but the band.
Yeah.
It is rock. And then the three, four, five just went out. That will be.
Oh, April eleven, yeah. Drop off.
What is, kids have to drop off?
You can shout it wrong if you'd like, but there is a.
I was shouting Friday.